Okay. All right, good morning, everyone. First item on our agenda, the smallest approved minutes of August 28th. I got a motion to approve, and I'll second it in the vote unanimous. You agree with that?
Agreed.
Okay, item two is to meet with the National Research Energy Lab about our solar project. So, good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. So, who wants to start off on your end?
I am happy to do so.
So, I've provided to you, I guess, a guideline as to what the plan is to cover this morning on this, on this call.
Already.
How are you guys doing? Emily, are you in Alaska?
I technically am not. I actually am in Colorado, but I do work for the Fairbanks, Alaska campus.
Oh, okay. I just wasn't sure. I'd seen Alaska on the header or something of an email. So, I was like, wow, that'd be very early for you.
Yeah, thankfully not.
We're gonna do a high-level overview of what we're talking about here, I guess, and then we get down to some of the details.
Yes.
You can actually go through the line.
Okay. Well, one of you guys, I know you spoke with the county administrator with Diane. We've had a couple of phone conference calls.
Yes.
So, what what is it you're gonna try to do for us? I guess that's what I need to find out.
Yeah, great. I'll give you kind of a high-level overview of what we're doing, and then I'll have Ambush here with me, give more of the nitty-gritty details of the fun analysis we are actually completing. So, this program is through the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant, or EECBG, Technical Assistance voucher. Enrel is completing a techno-economic analysis to model the possible energy resilience intervention configurations with a strong focus on solar for Stratford County. We're completing this analysis through the System Advisor Model, or a tool called SAM, that we have been working closely with Diane Legere and Ray Bauer to gather those appropriate data points that we require to complete this analysis. So, to date, we have worked with Diane and Ray to fully flesh out the SOW and get it approved by DOE to proceed. We identified right in the beginning several data needs, and Diane and Ray have provided several pieces of those key information data points that have allowed us to populate most of our analysis at this point. We're currently working on a few gaps that we do have in the information that we require. We, these have been discussed, and Diane and Ray have received an email prior to this meeting of those data requests as well. We're currently in the proof of concept portion of this simulation, so we have used information provided, as well as currently utilizing generic data points as placeholders for fields that we intend to continue to discuss with Diane, adjusting the analysis to meet your expectations in Stratford County. Ambush, since you are on the call, thank you. He is our subject matter expert on the project, and he can briefly discuss kind of a high-level look of what we're doing in SAM.
Thank you. Thank you, Emily.
All right, well, you wanna, wanna continue then?
Let's see.
We think that'll... Ambush, you muted? So, we're good?
Can you hear me, guys?
Yeah, we can hear you, yeah.
Okay, so Emily, should I proceed about like the modeling part?
Yeah, feel free to share a high-level view of what we're doing, what you're doing in SAM.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody, and thank you, Emily, for the introduction. So, I'm Ambush Nag, and as Emily said, I'm the modeler and I'm the subject matter expert from Enrel. So, so what we are working on, you know, like, so we have been, you know, as a proof of concept, we have been simulating the area option one. So, basically, we are simulating like the outputs and like the finances of the different area options that was provided to us in the Solar Feasibility Review Report that was done in March 2022, and it was provided to us as a report. So, that report has like four different, you know, solar area options. And, you know, we are trying to model one of them using a tool called SAM that has been developed by Enrel researchers. Basically, right? So, there are four different area options, and you know, as a proof of concept, you know, we have just taken the first one, which we call the area option one, and we are trying to simulate that option. And I should emphasize that, you know, like, this is, you know, the simulations that we have done, it is far from the finished product. It is rather a straw man, you know? And we are trying to run the simulation just to make sure we have all the inputs that we need from you guys. So, you know, like, I mentioned previously, graciously provided us with this document called the Solar Feasibility Review Report. And, you know, like, so some of the input parameters, you know, for the simulations, we are finding in that report. The parameters that we cannot find from the report, we use the default values for the SAM software. And I should mention that these default values that are used in the SAM software are taken from a document called Enrel ATB, or like Annual Technology Baseline. So, we want to make sure that the default values that we use, you know, you guys are on board with these default values, and we agree with those, you know, with our assumptions and those default values. So, the way I assume it's going to be is, you know, we are going to do like one or more iterations of, you know, refining the input parameters, you know, like, before we get to the final, the simulation results. So, and you know, like, let me get to a little, little more detail, and then I'll stop. So, so several, several quantities are already available in the report that you had shared with us, such as like systems, like inputs, like system size, the DCAC ratio, et cetera. However, you know, we have questions about, you know, the tilt values for the fixed tilt racking. You know, we have, from the financial perspective, we have questions, you know, like, about like things like whether you plan to get a loan for this? And if you plan to get a loan, what's going to be the rate percentage, like the loan term and the loan rate? It would be interesting to know if you're getting any incentives either at the federal or the state level. Since it's not clear to us who's the owner or the operator of the plant's solar installations, is going to be, we are curious if you should consider any federal or state income taxes? And, you know, we also have questions about your electricity rate structure. So, I should mention that, you know, we don't go into too much details. So, these are some example questions that we have for you guys. But we have created a very detailed list of itemized questions, which has already been sent to Diane, so that, you know, like, she, you know, and answering these questions will provide much, many more inputs, you know, like, for this analysis. And, you know, so the simulations, you know, like, it basically, you know, you basically simulate the cash flow analysis, and you know, and you get like the time series of, you know, like, the quantities of interests, you know, like, and, you know, we can go deeper into that, like, if, you know, if you want to know. But this is the overview of the technical part, and you know, like, I'd be happy to answer more of your questions, if you have any.
Oh, I see this list of questions that was forwarded to Diane. She received them yesterday, and this is the first time I've had a chance to look at them. So, we'll have to get back with you on some of the, some of this detail that you're, that you're asking for, because I understand on the financial perspective, you know, whether or not we're gonna borrow the money, whether we're gonna own it, whether it'd be, you know, spun off to the private sector to do. I mean, all that has an impact on, on payback and on the financial analysis. I understand that. Yeah. And you also have questions, and here I see quickly on sizing. And I'm just curious, and maybe this is a premature question, but whether or not we would use articulating, I guess, what I'm asking you guys, since you're supposed to be the, you know, the other consultants and experts, are we better off to have an articulating system? Or do we should just have a stationary one at a certain degree? What's been your history with that, anywhere in New England? Because we are in New England, so do you have any history with that?
To my understanding, you know, it is, you know, we have to run the analysis, and you know, but it is good to have these questions, it's good that you ask these questions. We can, you know, like, like, you know, we can use your questions to modify or tune the grid speci-, you know, like, the system specifications, and try to see like, well, no, like, like, what are the outputs for the, for the different options?
Get you, okay. I get it.
How long do the panels last, though?
Well, my colleague asked, how long do the panels last? I guess it depends on its design and whether it's a stationary system or an articulating system. I bet, I met them, I'm assuming they have different lifespans. I've seen as much as 40 years and as little as 15 years. So, I guess it depends on what the market has.
So, yeah, it's, you know, like, for, you know, like, as you said, on an average, you know, like, the, it's of the order of decades, right? But, you know, if you want more details, we have to, like, we have to look into the, you know, like, the fact sheets for the specific panels that, that you guys have in mind, or you guys want to look up, and you know, we can get back to you on that. But, you know, it is of the order of decades.
Yeah, so, just depends on what we do, you know, what we want, think we want to do.
So, in the report that you guys had shared with us, you know, I think it was like, like, the analysis was done by Partner Engineering and Sciences. It was done in March 2022. This was the solar, the solar study feasibility review report. I think they had mentioned some specific types of panels, and you know, what I can do is, you know, I can look up for specific types of panels and their fact sheets and see if they have any data on longevity.
Right, and that information, that information's three years old as well, so there's been changes in the market.
Exactly. It's starting 2022, it's not very recent, so things might have changed in the meanwhile.
Right, right. Okay. Well, in this list of, I mean, there's not much more, I think, you can, we can talk about until we get all these questions answered, right?
But, Ambush, would you make recommendations as to the type of panels that would be best? Is that going to be part of the result of all of this?
I mean, that is something that we can, we can consider. And so there's a, so we can, we can, we can definitely consider that, and it is something that I have to discuss with my other colleagues, but it is definitely of a consideration, to my understanding, unless you have something specific in mind.
We don't have anything specific in mind. We're trying to do, we're trying to do, I guess, for lack of a better term, the right thing, and something that has a legitimate payback that we can support. I know the devil's in the details here, so we've gotta, we've gotta flush out, you know, we need some assistance, technical assistance here as to whether, on what type of panel we're talking about, its life expectancy, based on what, and sizing based on our present load and what we might think the future load would be. I suppose we're gonna have to get that to you.
There's also, there's a depreciation factor.
Right.
You know, and if, even if it's a 25-year loan, you know, it's not gonna be at full capacity for 25 years, and then all of a sudden stop.
Right.
You know, there's a...
Yeah, now, is there an operating, is, maybe you can answer this question for us. Is there an operating deficiency that takes place with panels over a course of time? Are some panels, you know, operated at 100% capacity? Do they, I'm assuming they don't operate at 100% capacity throughout their lifespan?
They don't. Panels, they do degrade, and you know, like, like, long back, like, a few years back, I was part of a project where we modeled, like, the panel, the degradation rate for a particular type of panel, basically. So, I was like, one of the people who, like, contributed to the Python package for measuring the degradation rate. That being said, you know, like, we will, we can start with the panels that, like, the partner, like, the partner, like, engineering and services, like, they started, you know, like, they suggested, and you know, we can compare them, we can do like, we can do some research, we can look at, like, other comparable panels, you know, and do a competitive research, you know, as to like, whether we should stick to their choice, or whether we should, you know, move on to, like, other and possibly better choices.
Yeah, okay, I get it.
I have a question, because in previous calls, we talked about Rockingham County's solar project. And we had provided you with the contact information for Chuck Nickerson at Rockingham County, because he is basically, I guess, managed that project, right?
Yeah.
Have you, has he been in contact with you? Do you have any information from Rockingham County at this point?
Fortunately, I only have what is found currently on the internet. I reached out to Mr. Chuck Nickerson via phone call about three times, and then also left him about three emails. His admin or whoever I was speaking with told me that if he found it important, he would schedule a meeting, and we never had a meeting scheduled, unfortunately. I'm, we're more than happy to connect with them. We just might need some extra support.
I'll bring that to Chuck, yeah.
Thank you.
We'll make sure he gets back in touch with you. We can do that. So, I guess that we need to, I'm assuming we need to get some more questions answered here for you guys, so we can have a little more meaningful discussion. Yeah, because...
We'll get on there right away and schedule something again as quickly as possible.
Yeah.
Some of these questions they're asking of us are some of the questions we've asked of them.
Of them, right, I see that.
Like, you know, would, which would be better, you know?
Right.
And, and my understanding, and I could be wrong, but my understanding, and Representative Harrington actually mentioned it to me, is that a lot of times governments were shying away from doing it themselves, because they had no ability to get to the tax advantage.
Right.
My understanding is they've made it, and Chuck Nickerson would be the better one to answer this. But my understanding is that they're actually were paying what would be equivalent to a tax advantage back to the entity.
Right, that's correct.
You know, back to the governmental entity, when in the past
that was allowed, yeah.
that wouldn't have been allowed. So, I mean, these are the things that I think Chuck can help us with, because they're finishing up that project in Rockingham County, because they've, what they've done is, in their new building, I don't know if you've seen it, but their new, it's an amazing building. On the roof of, they've created parking shelters, and on the roof of every one of them, they've put, you know, solar on, on the roof. And and if there's a way to squeeze a nickel, as you know, out of, you know, any source, you know, I have the greatest amount of respect for Chuck Nickerson to do that.
So, if we can get as many of these questions answered, I mean, some of this is, I was, I was under an assumption that you folks were gonna be providing some alternatives to us based on our demand and our load. Are you gonna be able to?
Oh, that's, that's totally fine, but you know, like, I mean, it would be good to know, like, which questions specifically you want us to answer, and we could do more research into that.
Okay, all right, so let us look, let's, let's look at the list of questions.
We'll have, we'll have the information to him by the beginning of the week.
Right, yeah. We'll get as much, as much as many of these questions answered for you. So, you guys, because we really, I'm very concerned about the fact that the federal government is getting rid of the private sector tax incentive here next, by next July. So, we've got, if we're gonna use the private sector in this project, which was at least initially our, our first position, we gotta get moving on this. We can't, we don't have time to mess around with this, you know, too, too long.
Got it. Yeah, and basically, you know, like, this model, like, this tool, SAM tool, it has different financial models, and you know, and we have used, like, the PVWatts commercial model for now. But, you know, like, depending on, you know, what you guys need, we can, you know, try different models, like, different financial models, and see which is most economical. You know, where the simulated output, you know, like, is the most desirable, basically. So, so it would be good to know that, you know, like, what exactly you guys do know, and you know, and what you guys don't know, so that, you know, we can iterate between us, you know, like, so you give, you give us, you know, like, some inputs, you know, you refine the simulations, and then, you know, like, we show you the different options, and then you can say that, oh, no, this is not what we want, this is what we want. And then, you know, we can, we can do it alternatively, you know, till we get to the results that you guys desire.
Well, let's see if we can nail this down within a week, a week or 10 days to figure out what, you know, we'll answer your questions, and then give you guys a chance to look at it and get back to us, because I'd like to be able to do, make a decision on this prior to January in terms of what direction we're moving in. So, if we have to put an RFP out to the private sector for this, you know, we have time to do that, because I want them, if the private sector's gonna do this, and we also have to do an analysis on whether or not the county should own it. I don't know whether that's the right way or the wrong way, but my gut initially is to have the private sector do it, and let them get the tax advantage. But that goes away, like I said, next June or July, based on the federal law. I'm sure you folks are aware of that, so...
We are, and, and I think, you know, to the best of my knowledge, we are, we are planned to get this analysis done by the end of December, so...
Okay, good, that's good, okay, all right. All right, then we'll get back with you then. I appreciate you joining us this morning.
Good time, and I really, really appreciate your input.
Yeah, thank you all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Are they going?
No.
Curtis is only outside right now.
He's at Durham Townhouse.
The situation, Mr. Chairman, is I reviewed those questions last night.
That's when we got that.
Yeah.
This is the first time, this is the first time we got them.
A number of those questions are things that we asked them.
Them, right, I know that, I see.
You know, we...
I know, this is...
And, and, and my conversations with Diane this morning, even the other stuff that they had asked for, we've gotten the good stuff to them before, right? You know, the same stuff. And we also, you know, gave them the report from 2022.
Right.
A couple of times.
I mean, the question...
The problem, the way I see it, and mine and Diane's discussion, is when they were moving forward and then lost the grant. Somehow, the federal government stopped.
Yeah, Trump stopped.
And, and remember, this wasn't a grant where we chose the vendor.
Right.
That, that's the normal way to do it, right? You get an allocation of so-and-so much money.
And we go out, we hide.
We go out, we go out for an RFP or an RFQ, and we get the, we pick a vendor, you know, with a capped amount of money, you know, understanding that they're only gonna pay us so much money.
Right.
And, you know, we fit that into the budget.
Yeah, I know, I know how it works.
They basically gave us $77,000 worth of technical assistance with the vendor that they chose.
Yeah, they chose the vendor, not...
There's no transfer of money or anything, we get.
They should be telling us what they need.
They should tell us what we need.
Well, they should engineer it, they should, I mean...
I mean, when we, I look at these questions, I, I mean...
I mean, I can answer some of these questions, but that's for the reasons why we hide, hide them.
In a lot of...
And we also asked for an analysis of private versus public.
That was one of the things that we asked for.
And options of funding, whether it's federal funding or...
The other piece of this is there's been subsequent grants that have been offered. But in order for us to apply for those subsequent grants, we need the information from this grant.
Right.
It's like they build on each other.
Yeah.
And, and we can't, we could not apply...
We have to have a, a project and a plan in place.
In order to get the second part of the grant. You know, and, and that's been the dilemma, is that this has just gone on and on and on.
Do you have contact with Mr. Nickerson?
Yeah, Chuck can help.
Chuck can help a little bit, because at the end of the day...
He could probably help a lot, where they have a, a project that's online, that they did.
Yeah.
You know, just miles down the road.
Yeah. And then Chuck will help us, too. I mean, he's, he's a really good guy. In fact, what, what I...
Probably could help us maybe with some of these questions.
What I probably do, gentlemen, if it's okay with you, is I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, we're gonna talk to Chuck about any of those questions that he might be able to help us answer. But what I'd like to subsequently do is invite him to a commissioner's meeting, your next meeting. Chuck will come up here. I, I mean, gosh knows, I've gone to Rockingham enough to help them.
Right.
I wouldn't even mind walking, I can take the time to walk across, Jack, that he did, to see.
Well, maybe we'll go down there.
Down there.
Maybe we should go down there.
It's the whole thing about reinventing the wheel.
Yeah, maybe we should, you know...
Yeah, I don't wanna reinvent the wheel. I wanna steal ideas. I don't want, we don't, we don't have, we don't have time. We don't, we're running out of time.
Well, I know these people...
We've lost a whole damn year, it's really...
Right. Well, that wasn't our fault, I mean...
No, I know it's not, none of this is the staff's fault.
All, I mean, and all of the, except for Ambra, everybody else is playing.
Everybody else is brand new.
They're all new.
The only one that's been on this regularly.
You know, so, 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 so the fact that we won't spend, this is, this was frustrating. Okay, so the federal government spent $77,000 with these people. They don't even know what the hell they're talking about, at least, at least, that doesn't sound like they do. Maybe they do, maybe they just, this is like hiring a janitor, and having the janitor say to me, "Well, do you want me to use a broom? And do you want me to use, you know, toilet brushes and cleaners? And do you want me to clean the carpet?" I mean...
Well, like, it almost sounds like they're following a very script, script.
And this stand.
Like, talking about, like, the modeling, and the, you know, like, it's very, like...
That's what it was.
Very narrowly focused on data points.
I think they're trying to fit, right, I think they're trying to fit into this SAM model, whatever that SAM...
I'll get a hold of Chuck, and then I'll arrange a conference call with Diane, Chuck, and I, and I'll... If you'd scan those, no, actually, I have the question.
Just from a pure business perspective, we're spending a million dollars a year on electricity here. They didn't pay $77,000 a year to do this. We, we'd have been better off to fund it ourselves and pick who we wanted and get to show them the damage.
Well, we tried that.
I know, we couldn't get the...
We, we tried, we tried, when, when they told us that they were stopping the project, because the feds had stopped it, I said, "Could we pay you to finish it?"
Right.
Because they were already partly done.
Partly done, yeah.
And, and they said, "No, no, no." We, remember, Diane, you and I inquired, because it might have, it might have been worth us coming back to you.
Well, we're, we're, well, we're into it now. Let's see what happens after this next round.
Well, actually, I have to tell you, this list here is the most we've gotten. I mean, at least there's something
Right.
other than asking for very general information. It's, maybe this is progress.
Well, we'll answer the questions, and we'll see, then we'll, then we'll hold our judgment from there. But right now, I'm not too excited about it.
SAM is a software, it's a construction management project tool, it's a piece of software used specifically for energy products.
Okay, okay.
For modeling what your energy system is gonna look like, you know, where the solar's gonna fit in, where your natural gas is gonna fit in, where all this is gonna fit, basically, just to stop it.
That's another thing, if you're gonna do a cogen plant here, like, we gotta figure it all out in one piece. Right, well, the other thing, too, is that I'm just saying maybe, I'm not saying we're gonna do, we're gonna do this, but if we do the cogen piece, and we still do the solar, the solar could be used to help communities. Because you could, you could do it to help, for instance, housing companies, pay their electrical bills, because you get credit, because you pump it into the grid. So, you know, it could be municipalities, you know, the city of Rochester, the town of Somersby, the city of Rock, Somersby, Durham.
Use it for covered bridge.
Yeah, covered bridge, right, right, that's true. You could, you could do, you can do a bunch of stuff here. So, we could do the cogeneration component and the solar piece. But the solar piece could be more community-generated, meaning, meaning, like, they have that Community Power Program now that Dover was messing with, that now is in Manchester, and they're going across the whole state, creating those opportunities, because you're just pumping into the grid, you're producing electricity, you're pumping the grid, ever source purchases it. And you said, and the biggest problem they've had with some of this stuff is getting, is finding the land to put it on. That's been the biggest deterrent to the Community Power Program. That's why they're looking at all landfills, and they're looking at all these things, you know, because there's just no land available to do it on. So, I think we ought to be doing both. I think we ought to be doing the cogeneration and the solar.
And I did, I did forward to these individuals that presentation from last week on cogeneration as well.
Right.
You know, that, you know, please take a look at this.
Yeah, so they, so they're trying, what they're trying to do is come back to ask us what it is we want.
Which we've already told them.
Which we've already kind of told them. Yeah.
You're right from the beginning, that was the first thing we said to them, is, you know, that's what I presumed we got to...
I guess, I think we figured we'd get recommendations and progress.
Right.
The things they're asking us about.
They're saying they will give us the recommendations, they just want more information. I think they're kind of covering this.
All right, well, Diane and I, we're gonna, I'm gonna hold to Chuck Nickerson today.
Yeah, okay.
And we can set up a conference call with Diane, Chuck, and I at the beginning of the week.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
We got some upcoming events. Coming up that are listed on our agenda. Do you have any older new business for me to talk about? No? All righty, you got any questions to comment? We're ready to this agenda. You and I have the same questions after that presentation, I can tell you that.
I, yeah.
But that's nothing we can do.
I I understand and I feel like there was a huge disconnect somewhere with.
Well, there's been multiple disconnects, but that's not our, that had not.
It's a reflection on the staff or or you. But one of the things that has come up. And I'm by no means very well educated in this, but I've sat through a few things, especially with the city of Rochester. And some of the questions that come up is end of life. And when these reach their life expectancy, the removal and where those actually go and I tend, that's kind of. A sore spot with me sometimes is to. Planning for the future and not leaving it on the next generation for something like that. So that's something that, you know, I hope that you really take a hard look at. On the surface, but down the road, where does this all impact us? And I like the idea of having a public component. Or like cap or covered bridge or some of the other places that we could. I have dumped this electricity into the grid to help them. I I think that that is, from my perspective.
Well, that's what I would. You and I have the same opinion that we we. If if we're going to do it, we have to meet our needs here first and then. Depending on nature of whether it's cogeneration, I mean, to me, the cogeneration thing is a no brainer. Because we get rid of all our generators, you get rid of the expensive generators, they have all short and long term issues. Generators are a pain in the neck, we have to run them every thirty days, we have all, when you do this, if you did the natural gas. That all goes away. You don't have to worry about that. And and it should be done for the entire conference.
And I think at the last meeting, and not that I'm singling one person out, but somebody who knows a lot about this and you know him. And and. Because he really. And there was also the discussion panels versus trackers and he would be a good one.
He does a lot of trackers.
I hope they're all over.
Yeah, he owns them all.
Yes.
So. Okay.
And he would probably have really good knowledge on the payback.
The rebate.
And rebates and all of that stuff that goes into that. So, thank you for letting me.
Yeah, no problem. No problem. All right, in a motion, how to move a non-public thing. Personnel. Contracts and a motion, we're going to eleven all seconded, and commissioners have to be a role called Commissioner Levin, yes. Myself, yes, okay, Commissioner, the title of non-public section.